Welcome to the CIDL Remote Board Meeting for March 20, 2020. Before we start the meeting, I want to give everybody a little bit of a rundown about this remote meeting. At the February 10, 2020 Library Board Meeting, the Board approved a policy regarding remote participation at meetings. On March 13, the Library Board held an emergency meeting to address COVID-19. At that meeting, they voted to enact remote participation at Library Board meetings for the duration of this closure. March 18, 2020, Governor Whitmer released Executive Order Number 2020-15, Temporary Authorization of Remote Participation in Public Meetings and Hearings. So today, we are working to follow our recently approved policy and an executive order, so please be patient with us as we navigate new rules while maintaining transparency in difficult circumstances. So how are we holding this meeting? Library Board members are participating in the meeting in person via Zoom or by conference call. The meeting is being recorded and will be posted by Independence Television, which is standard. The meeting is being streamed via Facebook Live. The public is able to participate using Zoom, conference call, or Facebook Live, and we need to be very careful during this meeting to speak only one at a time. And I'm going to just say upfront, I talk fast, and I am going to try not to talk fast. So please let us know if you need us, me, to slow down, or if anyone needs to speak up, because we want to try and make sure everybody can hear and participate appropriately. And then just a few words from me, and I'm going to read this because I wrote it in the middle of the night. We'll just say I wrote it in the middle of the night when it occurred to me. So today is my 14th anniversary as Director of Library today. Not yesterday, not tomorrow, today. Today, I was supposed to leave to go on vacation, which many of you know is something I don't do very often. And what that kind of came to me last night is that there are millions of stories of how COVID-19 has changed people's lives in big and small ways. I'm very passionate about libraries, about lifelong learning, and about the fact that we are often a lifeline to people who are isolated. And now we are all facing the possibility of time and isolation. Every day, this library, at this library, I am surrounded by people who are passionate about libraries, so our hardworking staff, our engaged board members, our dedicated volunteers, and a supportive community. Today, we are here to talk about what's next for your library and service to you in a confusing and difficult time. Our mission statement is innovate, educate, and enrich. We are using that guiding light even more than usual given these circumstances. I am grateful to the public for the public's patience, for the staff's hard work, and the board and front support as we figure this out together. And I look forward to sharing what we come up with. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, I would like to call to order the Clarkston Independence District Library Board and Trustees Meeting for March 20, 2020 at 2:32 PM. Let's rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Jan Gaffney.
I'm here.
Dan Green.
Here.
Alyssa McFadden-Kießling. Do you know Alyssa?
She is not logged in.
Nancy Moon. Are you here, Nancy?
I'm here.
Thank you. Marilyn Palmeroy.
Here.
Ann Rose.
Hello.
Thank you. Kristelle.
Here.
Julianne is here. Okay. I'll accept a motion for approval of remote participation of board members. We will do this by roll call, once it's moved and seconded.
I will immediately throw to the remote participation of Jan Gaffney, Alyssa McFadden-Kießling, Nancy Moon, and Ann Rose.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the remote participation of board members. Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say. Roll call. Oh, roll call. Please take the roll.
We have to do a roll call for every member.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Right.
Kristie Scholl.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved. I'll now accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
I approve approval of the agenda.
My second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda as presented. Any comments or questions? If not, please take the roll. Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Yep.
Kristie Scholl.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is approved. Now is the time for the call to the public. However, today, we have no public.
Do we have any public? I'm sorry, do we have any public Zoom? We have public in Zoom.
Do we have any Zoom?
There are four people in Zoom.
Does anyone in Zoom wish to address the board? No.
No.
Okay. You're on. In that case, we will put an end to the call to the public. Thank you. Now, regular business. Number one is an update of projects since the closure on March 16.
Okay, this is a list. Everybody ready? Okay, so the week of March 9, news of the coronavirus started to spread. The CDC, Center for Disease Control, and OSHA, the Occupation or Safety and Health Administration, released guidelines. CIDL staff reviewed that we were following those guidelines and increased sanitation frequency. CIDL monitored and communicated with Clarkston Community Schools. On Thursday, March 12, we reviewed their plan to close for the day on Monday, March 16, for deplanning and faculty meetings and training, and we talked about ways that we could help them. On Thursday, March 12, CIDL started canceling and postponing large programs. On Friday, March 13, Clarkston schools closed and neighboring libraries also started to close. CIDL postponed canceled programs through April 12. CIDL Board called an emergency meeting on Friday, March 13, at noon to discuss further response. At that meeting, the Library Board voted to close until further notice beginning March 16 and scheduling a board meeting to review the situation on Friday, March 20 at 2:30. The Board wanted the library to stay open for the weekend to assure patrons had an opportunity to check out materials. They also wanted us to investigate curbside service and report back at the next meeting. Staff who are at high risk or have family members who are at high risk had their weekend shifts filled by others who were able to do so. We were busy with lots of grateful patrons and lots of questions about library service during the closure. In addition, the Board voted to pay both full-time and part-time employees through the duration of the closure. The Board voted to double DVD limits to also, to patrons to stock up before closure. Due dates and fines are waived during the closure. The Library Board closed to the public on March 16, but work did not stop. Administrative tasks such as check runs, payroll, and audit, which was done remotely, review with school administration about virtual learning and ways we might help. There was deep cleaning of the library, checking in and materials. IT and PR were also involved in their usual projects, things that they were able to do from home and some work here. Behind-the-scenes tasks such as book ordering, preparation for future programs, collection maintenance, et cetera. On Monday, March 16, the Governor released an executive order temporarily closing places of accommodation, which included libraries, and that happened at 3:00 PM. It also encouraged the provision of carryout food service. There has been ongoing discussion regarding how long the virus lives on hard surfaces such as library books, DVD cases, puppets, et cetera. There has also been conversation about whether it is safe to recirculate materials that have been returned to other, returned to other people, so to send them back out into the world. On Wednesday, March 18, the Library Department Heads met to discuss what we can do for our patrons, specifically taking into account a work-from-home environment. That included phone, email, chat assistance, promote online service and provide support, provide online programming, and what else that might entail. So we have a filing meeting about that. Any questions about any of that?
Any questions? No comments? Thank you. That was very clear. It was a very hectic week. It was crazy, but it all started in the moon, the full moon, and Friday the 13th. Indeed. Number two, disclosure, discussion of the length of closure.
Okay, so I have a little recap of the length of what's going on in other places. So CIDL is currently closed until further notice. Clarkston Community Schools are currently closed through April 5. The Executive Order 2020-9 closes place of accommodation through March 30. That includes libraries. Neighboring libraries, including Brandon Township, they closed March 16 until further notice. Orion Township closed March 13 until further notice. Springfield Township Library is March 16 through April 6. Waterford Township Library is closed March 16 until further notice. And the next regularly scheduled CIDL Board Meeting is Monday, April 6 at 2:40 PM. So I'm not sure what kind of conversation you want to have in terms of, I think we've got a whole bunch of different closure dates going on here.
Well, given the current information about COVID-19, 200 and some more cases have been identified so far, so up to 500 and some. Consequently, because of the rapid movement of this information, closed until further notice is probably the best way to go. We should reevaluate April 6.
I agree.
That's how accurate that is, our next scheduled meeting. The way things look right now, we don't know exactly how fast we're escalating in this country, so special distance is important, along with all of those other things like washing our hands. So I think we should wait until April 6 and then reevaluate.
I agree.
If that's acceptable. I'll accept a motion. I'm hoping that we keep the library.
I would vote that we continue the closure until further notice and reevaluate that our regular Board Meeting on April 6.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. I second.
Okay, Kristie needs you to it.
Okay.
So thank you. We've been, it's been moved and seconded that we reevaluate on April 6. Any other comments or questions about that? If not, all those in favor, please, please take a roll call. We'll get this by the end of the meeting. By the end of the meeting, I might have this. Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Dan Green.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Palmeroy.
Yes.
Ann Rose.
Right.
Kristie Scholl.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, number three. Now, presentation of library service plan during closure.
Okay, I'm trying to keep this, I'm trying to keep this pretty concise, but we had a, we had a great Zoom meeting, so, on Wednesday. As communities in other parts of the country move to shelter in place, how do we provide library service to our patrons? Millions of people connect with customers and clients while working from home, so how do we do this too? So on Wednesday, we had a Zoom meeting with the Department Heads to talk about this, and some of the specific things we talked about were forwarding the library phones to provide account assistance, information services, and technical support, with the idea being that we would create a schedule for library staff to answer calls and questions. We also talked about email and chat information services, and we could create a schedule for librarians to answer remotely. We talked about online services, in other words, overdrive, hoopla, canopy, et cetera. We talked about online programming for youth with something new each day, such as Facebook Live Storytimes, Book Buzz, teen trivia, et cetera. There's quite a nice Excel spreadsheet from the Children's Department about what they're working on there. We also, at the last Board Meeting, approved additional Wi-Fi hotspot, which we can use in order to be able to make sure that staff can work from home and could also make those available to help the schools with their virtual learning, which I know they're still talking about. And we also talked about tutor.com, and I do have in your packet something in here regarding tutor.com for those of you who don't know what that is. Tutor.com is actually an online tutoring service that does live tutors. It would be accessed from our website. You could, patrons could click on it, engage a session with a live tutor. It covers kindergarten all the way through 12th grade, all different kinds of subject areas. We did have this service a number of years ago. It's a great service. It can get very expensive very quickly. When the bottom fell out of the economy, we had to cancel it because we just didn't have the money to support it. The more people use it, the more cost because they're live tutors. But, in the interest of assisting parents, and in the interest of, in some ways, in the interest of being helpful, tutor.com has provided a special package deal, which I have laid out before those of you who are present in the room. I didn't really get a chance to send it out. I apologize to those of you who are remote. But essentially, what it is, is a package deal. It's $100 for us to implement this service. It is a $9 per session cost, and they're offering a package. You need to buy at least 100 sessions. This is a discount down from their usual $11 per session fee. There are hours of coverage. It's available from 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, but we are allowed to go in and make adjustments to that if there's something that's different that we would like to do. It does include ACT, SAT Essentials. It includes things for people who are working on advanced placement studies, that sort of thing, ASVAB quizzes, that kind of thing. So I talked to Brad Rutter, who is our librarian who handles all our e-collections, and he said he would be willing to monitor and take care of this, and he recommended a budget of $4,600, and that would be 500 sessions. And he would monitor that. This would be good until June 30, so we are going to put a cap on this. This is for the duration of this particular situation. So we wouldn't be committing ourselves to anything more than that, but that is one of the things that was.
Really just through the school year.
Just through the rest of the school year, yeah.
And how do you let people know this is available?
It would be on the website, and then we would rely on our marketing librarian and our community relations person to get out there via social media and such. Okay, so those are the things that we sort of had on our, on our to-do list, things that we would like to do. One of the things that was specifically, we were instructed to investigate was library material carryout service. It's interesting because the executive order that closed the library, the places of accommodation, that phrase just cracked me up. Places of accommodation said that they were encouraging food and beverage carryout service. So of course, librarians who are very literal immediately contacted the state librarian and said, does this include material service? Are we allowed to check out? Because there were a number of libraries that were doing some kind of carryout service. And there was a lot of conversation over the course of the week about whether you should, whether you shouldn't, how long does the virus live on these materials? And we never really got a clear answer about whether or not, whether we should or should not. But I feel that the reality is, now that we're seeing communities go to shelter in place, by the time we would get it launched, the likelihood is we would be shelter in place and would not be allowed to continue it. So we could launch it and then it would stop right away. And there is not an affirmative answer about how long the virus will live on those hard surfaces like books, DVD cases, puppets, et cetera. And that items being returned would then be going back out to others, and we could potentially be putting people at risk without even realizing that we're doing so. So it would be my recommendation that we forego that in, in an effort to put forward some of these other great ideas where we would be helping people via phone and chats and that sort of thing.
I have a question. Yes, you are. Comment, I guess. I think it's great to talk about what this program is during all of this, but we have adults who are all so isolated, and is there, has there been any thought about, I know it's, you know, Storytimes are a little bit easier for us to facilitate, but is there any thought to what we might be able to do for our adult population during this time?
That is actually in the works. They, they did not have enough time to give me specifics, so the adult department is working on those things, but I didn't have any specific. There were a few things mentioned, for example, our travel program is something that could potentially be filmed and done via Facebook Live. They were talking about potentially some kind of online book groups and things. I don't want to commit them to too much because they were still really working through it. The Children's Department, there are a lot of Children's Departments doing things, and so they had a lot of inspiration and a lot of people to talk to, and we're not seeing as much potentially in terms of adult programming being done. I have a feeling that we've got some innovative ideas that could be coming, but they did not have anything specific, so it's definitely.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't forgetting.
We're not forgetting, huh? No. We're not forgetting.
A member of that population, I didn't want to ignore.
I apologize. I should have made it clear in the notes that I just don't have a lot of specifics on that yet. There's still.
I should have known that they'd be working on something, because we generally have such wonderful adult programs that I think they would just leave us hanging out here, but...
Thank you for helping me to remind everybody that we did not forget about you. Anyway, the proposed launch date for these sorts of things would be Monday, March 30, or sooner if possible, but we did want to give the staff kind of a week to figure out how they would launch these things. I know the Children's Department's already got quite a lot on their plates in terms of getting it out there. They're doing things already, so. Questions, comments?
Well, I do have one more comment. I would like to take this opportunity to commend you and the staff for all of your hard work during a very, very difficult time. I still want to reiterate the efforts that you are making.
Yes, we second that. So now, if we have these programs that are being discussed, especially tutor.com, we should make a motion to support them, the ones that we now have that we can launch. I think we need board approval to do that, I'm assuming. It requires funding.
Well, and I've got another, I've got, obviously, I've got some funding in here, some specific funding that we would like to talk about, but it is definitely services that we have not done before. So in terms of having people work from home, the Board did approve that the library staff are allowed to do some work from home and also still come into the building as long as we are allowed to. They'll do that until there potentially is an executive order to fund if we can.
Keep our social distancing.
Keep our social distancing, follow all the OSHA and CDC guidelines. I would also, so that they don't get forgotten, like to commend the custodial staff, because they were here Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, really doing a deep cleaning of the building. And thank you to them for doing that. When I came in this morning, they were already in my office scrubbing everything down for me, which I was, because I've been here all week, so it was really nice to see that they had, had taken extra time the moment I was in my office to scurry in and clean it for me.
So are we talking, we're talking specifically about tutor.com. Are we talking about library service by calling into the library with reference questions? That would affect the adult population, Jan.
Yes, it would.
See, we're not necessarily be calling into the library. The whole point is that our goal is to make us be a little clearer about this. Our goal is to provide a working environment in which the staff can work from home. So basically, and this is a good opportunity to share this, we have been thinking creatively about how do we forward phones? So I'm going to use this as an example. If we forward phones, our system will allow us to do that. We can forward it to, we'll say, well, Trevor's here. We're going to forward it to Trevor's phone. He will have a shift of two hours where he will be answering the library's phone and helping you. IT is in the process of making sure that they can log into their desktop that's at the library from home, so they would be able to use Polaris, they would be able to use any of our resources that we have that are available in-house, that sort of thing. In addition, if they were, if there were questions he were not able to answer, we've looked at ways that he could then forward it on to somebody who would specifically handle circulation questions. Or they, he could potentially have that person hang up and give him a different phone number to call. Now, what happens when you call that number, you call the library number that we tell you to call, and it will, it will go to his cell phone, but it will cloak his number. So he would not, the public would not see his personal cell phone number. As far as the public is concerned, he would be at the library, doing his work there, and being able to answer remotely. Thank you for being my example. Being our example. What you get for standing in the room.
Because right now, if you call the library, you get a statement about the fact.
About the closure.
About the closure, no fines. You get the statement, but you can't talk to anybody.
Right.
So this would be at least certain times during the day.
And so what we would, so what I have the Department Heads doing is creating a schedule based on how much staff we have that would be able to do that. And we do have some people who have small children who might not be able to take shifts as usually we do. We potentially maybe have somebody who is sick who can't do, do that sort of thing. We do have people whose, that's not their normal job description, but are willing to help. So they're, right now, sort of, we polled the staff through a survey and see who would be willing. Eighty percent of the staff is willing to answer the phones. Now, remote was, you know, they didn't understand we were necessarily asking them to do it remotely, so they may feel differently when it's remotely, but I think that there are a lot of people on staff who are willing to pitch in and help out.
So if that service becomes available, we can put that online on our website.
Yep.
And allow, and then the community will know that this is an opportunity if you have certain reference questions, or if you have something that the staff normally would be helping you with, they could do that.
And one of the things that I, that I think is most important about helping this, helping the public at this point is we're pushing them to our online services, but if you've never used overdrive, or canopy, or hoopla before, and you have a problem, there's nobody to call to help.
Right.
Whereas normally, they would call us and we would troubleshoot for them, and that's something I think is really important for us to be doing. We're pushing them to a service, and if they have trouble with it, they're not going to fight it out and try and figure out how to use it. They're going to find, go find a service somewhere else, and we've lost our relevancy, and we certainly aren't helping our community the way we should, so.
So we hope that this will be developed over the course of the next week or so.
So at this point, yes. And so at this point, I would suggest that we may need some latitude in terms of what those hours are going to look like. The staff is working on that furiously right now to figure out what kind of a timeline, you know, is it, is it only a few hours, say maybe it's four to seven, or maybe it's nine to five, or maybe it's.
Right.
But we need to be able to figure that out based on people's availability. And we've got a number of people who have kids who are going to be trying to work around, potentially answering the phone and dogs barking in the background, you know, just all kinds of exciting new adventures working from home that we've not experienced before. And it's going to be a little bumpy, but innovate is an mission statement, and I'm really sort of hoping to rally the troops that we do some really cool things in the coming weeks.
Okay. So we're working on that as a availability to the community, and what specific requests do we have then?
I think what I would ask is that you approve our proposed plan of services as presented and give us some latitude in terms of the hours that we offer those services, because it really will be dependent upon being able to get enough people rallied to do these things. If that's, if that's okay with the Board. To me, that being able to offer this is better than that, but what we're doing right now is just, is turning off the phones and not answering the phones, so.
I have a question.
Yes, yes.
Okay. What are, what are we going to do to introduce to the public that we're doing all this? Because right now, their comment is the library is closed, and so when they have called in, no one has been there to answer the phone, so how are we going to get the message out that we are stepping up and these are now the things we're going to do?
Well, I can tell you that.
Because you need to somehow get that out there.
I can tell you that Trevor and Adrian have been talking about that all week, about making sure that they're already getting out there what we do have, and they have a plan in place in their minds about how they would get that out there. We're working on redesigning the website, the front page, to make it very obvious that if you need informational help, you would call this number. If you need circulation help, you would call this number. We are being inspired by a page from another library, I believe it's Albany, New York, that we really, really like, and the staff has been working on that. So then using social media as well to get that information out there.
Okay. I think perhaps we maybe need to put something in the newspaper, because some people may not go to the website, assuming the library is closed.
Very good.
We have a note on that. Thanks, Nancy.
Well, the first thing that's going to happen if they call our number is they're going to actually get a person, so. And we can also put it right on the phone system when it's not able. We can actually customize our phone answering. So if they call during a time of service that we're not open, we can say right on there, while the library is closed, you can receive phone service during these hours of the day. Because I think many people who are maybe not tech savvy would still phone. Because I think many people who are maybe not tech savvy would still phone. You know, my own father, who is isolated at home right now, he would hop on the phone and call. And if we had it on as a phone answering system, if he called at 8:00 a.m. and he went there, if it said, "Hey, the librarians are available to answer your questions. If you call back at 1:00," then he would probably do that, so.
Okay, any other questions before we take a motion here?
I'm just concerned because I'm hearing in the building, "Well, the library is closed. What are you going to do for us?" I'm really not sure whether they're going to pick up the phone or they're going to go to the website.
Oh, no, I'm saying we can do the newspaper as well. But I was saying that the phone is in addition. The phone message would be an additional thing. I was trying to give other examples of things that we can do in terms of, sorry, wasn't making that clear. But other examples of ways...
And I can see that a lot of people will see it on social media.
We want...
And I think if we are part, you know, I'm on Facebook. If they put something on Facebook, I'll make sure that I share that, that I, you know, that I spread that word further. You know, I think that will help a lot, too.
Okay.
I don't want to put the two of you on top, but do either of you have anything you want to say about the way you might put it out there? It just so happens that marketing, community relations are here, so. We actually, I already had to submit our regular newspaper ad for the week for, that will be printed on Wednesday. And in it, I made sure to specifically say, "We have a lot of digital resources. Go to the website." And in it, I specifically said, "You can go to our website right now and sign up for our, to be on our mailing list, our email list." And that's where we'll be sending, as we have these new resources available, we'll send them out in an email, as long as you go and sign up for that email list. So, hopefully, because that, I had to submit that article yesterday, right? So, the newspaper is, it takes a while to print. So, that was the easiest way and the quickest way to kind of get people on our list, I believe. And in that, we also called out, "Be sure to follow us on Facebook and Instagram for updates as well."
So, trying to get it out in print as well as online?
Yes, Trevor.
Could I just add that, I'm going to stand over here because Nancy can see this, and she actually answered. Hi. So, Asia and I have been working, like, really closely with all the departments all week long. Actually, if you follow us all this week, you've seen that we've been actually already starting to promote our electronic resources. We're really trying to keep people connected. We made sure to let everyone know that all the students can get their free breakfast and lunch in varying places in the township. Actually, this afternoon, we're also going to do another Facebook Live to update the public. We're not able to watch this video on some of the, you know, big outline pieces in this meeting. So, like, we are, we are really doing that hard. We've obviously just begun. It's just been a week. But, I mean, we understand the business, how people are now going to find out about all the things that we're doing. If you have suggestions, we're obviously welcome to them. We really appreciate you sharing them. I really appreciate you saying that, Jan, because that's really going to help us, you know, spread the word. As people drive up, you know, they're going to see the sign, but they're not going to know everything else that we're doing. It's going to take all of us kind of joining together and sharing that with the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay. I'll accept a motion on the library service plan as presented.
I move that we approve the plan as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Allison.
Sure.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the library service plan as presented. With the duration here. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. I'm a slow learner today. Okay, roll call.
Because we don't do roll calls, Allison. Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Deanne Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Anne Rose. Thank you. Kristy Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, motion is passed. Now, a request for funds for these additional services.
We're in the home stretch. Okay. Okay, so the tutor.com budget I mentioned in our last agenda item, Brad is suggesting a budget of $4,600. We would request that from fund balance added to line 727, which is subscriptions. Also, for the IT budget, we're looking at software for remote desktops, software for chat reference, Zoom meeting subscription, and also additional phone lines. It takes, those additional phone lines are needed because when we're doing forwarding and such, we need more than one line, is that correct?
Yes. If a phone call is to be forwarded outside of the building again, it needs another phone line to handle that.
So, instead of just taking one phone line, it actually takes two phone lines?
Correct.
Yeah.
The request would give us up to four simultaneous phone calls.
So, he's asking for $2,000 for IT improvements. And that would be from fund balance to 933, equipment maintenance.
Okay, any questions or comments on those two items? Okay.
It seemed reasonable to me.
Okay. I'll accept a motion for funds for additional services for the first item, the $4,600.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a budget adjustment of $4,600 from fund balance to line 727, subscriptions for tutor.com. Any other comments or questions? So, this would be for 500 tutoring sessions between now and June 30th. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Jan Gaffney.
Oh. Yes.
Deanne Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Anne Rose. Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is passed. Then I'll give one more chance to just write. Now, I'll accept a motion for a budget adjustment for the IT part of this.
Well, I move that we approve a budget adjustment, $2,000 for fund balance for line 9 through 3 for IT improvements.
I'll second.
Did you get that, Erica? That was kind of a tie.
Yeah, it was a tie. It's fine, either way.
Either way. So, either Nancy or Jan.
Flip a coin. It's up to you.
Your discretion. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we transfer $2,000 for fund balance to line 933, which is equipment maintenance for IT improvements during this period. All those in favor?
Roll call.
Will now respond for roll call.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.
Deanne Green.
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling.
Yes.
Nancy Moon.
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy.
Yes.
Anne Rose. Chris Shaw.
Yes.
Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Now, do we have any other concerns today that we may not be meeting for a while?
I have one comment. Today is Julie's 14th anniversary of being director of this laboratory. If anybody in the Clarkston Independence area, anybody that lives on the Rock that might think that this is not, wasn't the right decision 14 years ago, I was on that board that made the selection committee that brought her here. And I think after what we've heard today, there can be no doubt that we made the right decision 14 years ago. And I think this is a marvelous, marvelous plan in very hard times.
Absolutely. Good job.
Well, I'm going to turn around and thank the staff because they have really pulled together this week. I know everybody's very, very stressed in this time. And Tuesday morning, I sent out an email saying, "Okay, guys, we're going to totally change the way we think about stuff." And if they thought I was crazy, they didn't say anything out loud, and they were super nice about it. So, but they've all pulled together, and I really appreciate everything that everybody's been doing this week. And I look forward to getting the community excited about the services that we're going on.
Yes. Given the stressful, stressful times, we want to thank the community for supporting the library.
And the board for being so flexible. I mean, I just, like, called everybody yesterday and said, "Hey, we're going to use this remotely." And they've been, "Okay."
Little of each. If there are no other concerns, I will accept a motion now for...
Before you do that, the reason I, part of the reason I put the other concerns in here is because we're doing this meeting remotely, and call to the public is way at the beginning. I did want to give an opportunity, if anybody had any other questions from the public or the people who are, who have joined us, and we've got some staff members who have joined us as well, does anybody have any questions that they would like to ask while the meeting is still public before we close that down, if that's okay? If there are any questions? Yes, no? No? Okay.
I'll pass along two comments from a couple of the people watching on Facebook. Tony from the Historical Society says, "Thank you for making everything manageable." And Joan Broda has a shout-out to Julie, and she says, "Congrats to Julie," so.
She also said, "You're the best."
Sorry.
All right, thank you. I wasn't, when I tell people it was my anniversary, I'm not fishing for comment. It just was very ironic because last night, as I was kind of finishing things up, I kept getting all these LinkedIn things that say, "Congratulations, it's your anniversary." I'm like, "What? Oh, yeah."
Well, I think everyone here deserves a lot of credit for putting this together on our first remote.
Yes, it took a lot more people to do a remote meeting than we've ever had to do a meeting before. So, thank you to ITV for being here and for Trevor and Adrian figuring all that out, and Bill for figuring out the Zoom and capabilities and all of that. So, three cheers for everybody.
So, as a learning experience, I commend all of us. I'll get with it for the next one. I'll practice asking for roll calls.
We should probably do a roll call on this last one as well.
That's good.
My working agenda doesn't say that, so I'm good.
All right. I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So move.
A second?
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney.
Yes.[1780.71]